And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending the United City Council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the cameras in the council chambers are set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has raised hand. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand.
Mayor Scully? Counselor Dillaba? Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Kennedy?
Here.
Counselor Powers? Counselor Reish? Counselor Scamperly? Quorum present.
We have one presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Thanks for the opportunity tonight. I want to go over our objective with this presentation. Again, I know we've been talking about it, but just so we're cleared on the record. My intent tonight is to give you a high-level overview and presentation, and then we will deliver to each council member tomorrow, paper and electronic copies of the draft, where we are today with the budget. And as promised to all of you, that budget is really going to be the snapshot, December 31st, 2022 to January 1, 2023. I've not made any substantial changes, structural movements to that. We have simply gone through and lined out the things that we thought we could line out quickly. Programs like the citywide reassessment, we won't do again next year at a quarter million dollars. We've added in revenue, our projection increases where we thought appropriate. But what I'm trying to do with this budget is, is give council the opportunity early on to look at it. There is near a three-and-a-half-million-dollar deficit in our projected revenue and our projected expenses if we simply move the organization where it was right now to 2023. We'll cover that in detail tonight. High-level areas, but I just, I want to continue to go over why we're doing this. In 2016, I want to quote now from a letter from Ms. Purdy. "In order to begin rebuilding, it's essential to understand that city council, the governing body elected by the residents of Augensberg to represent their interest, has to make some difficult decisions about what the city's services will entail in 2017 and onward, and that these services need to be smaller, not as varied as the services currently provided. Continuing at the current level of services is unsustainable. It is not appropriate for the appointed city manager to make these decisions autonomously or for the city manager and department heads to make these decisions without council input." There's no words that I can say, sitting here right now at the end of the year 2022, that are resoundingly more impactful than those words right there. It is not appropriate for me to send you a budget that will cut potentially three-and-a-half-million dollars from it, and then ask you in about 45 days to try to finite and make the hard decisions on how that's going to be sold. It's just not appropriate. There's too big a gap. This isn't a finite area that myself and the department heads can go through and find a million dollars. How do we sift it through? How do we borrow from here, take from here? It's just too much of a gap. It's three-and-a-half-million dollars. And that's not including addressing significant areas of capital improvement that we need to do. We would be likely deferring those. And Angela will talk a little bit about some of the projects that I don't think can wait much longer, that will only add to that three-and-a-half-million-dollar gap if council takes those on. So what I'm really hoping for tonight is we end this period and we turn things over to you, we will be able to get collective input. We will do these sit downs, five of them. DPW, Fire, Police, all of city staff, and then those significant exterior groups that rely on city money for their existence throughout the year. I think it's important we do these now. I need to deliver a preliminary budget to you on November 1st that looks about the 80% or 90% solution. We can't come in here on November 1st with a three-and-a-half-million-dollar gap. There's going to be no way to do that kind of work and meet the deadline. It has got to get done in the next 30 days. We've got to get much closer with the challenges we face. Again, I just, I want to call the council's attention because I think this is important, not because I'm lecturing any of you, but because I'm trying to demonstrate that we have been told this day was coming. We've been told this. In 2018, Ms. Purdy told you all again, "Collective bargaining agreements with police and fire unions are expiring, and I suggest the city needs an outside consultant and consultants to review the current structure and operational demands departments in order to determine if there are different structures that would more efficiently meet the operational demands." We didn't do that. Not even close. 2018, we were told by the Comptroller's Office, "If you keep moving forward where you are with the budget the way you have, the city will be at 100% of its tax limit if you didn't have exclusions." If you didn't have exclusions. Exclusions are like overdraft on the checking account. That's all they are. It's to tide you over, it's to help you through a tough time. It isn't supposed to be used day after day after day. It's like the reserve on the gas tank. If you use it and it goes empty, it's gone. And we're using it. We were using it then. We can't, we can't keep doing that. 2019, we were told the same thing, although we were told if you didn't have the exclusions, you'd have blown the constitutional tax limit by 1.7%. We're getting worse. 2020, the first year I got to see one of these letters, we were told if we stayed where we are, we blow the constitutional tax limit by 3.5%. And here's the bad part. We're staying below it based on exclusions. An exclusion is debt. So now we're going to get kicked in the back of the head for paying down debt because that's part of our exclusions that are keeping the limit down. So now we're getting incentivized to not pay down debt? How can that possibly make any sense whatsoever? And we're facing that situation this year. We have debt that would be paid down, good thing, but it takes away from the exclusions which help keep lowering that constitutional tax limit. So for all those people, wherever they are, some officials, some just don't know any better, there is no reason that taxes were dramatically cut in this city other than we couldn't run the risk of the city violating the state constitution. Of course you want to give money back to the people. Of course you do. Who doesn't want to give money back to the people? Who doesn't want to see taxpayers keep more money and provide incentives for businesses? But we can't blow that constitutional tax limit. We couldn't do it. Couldn't run the risk. And 20% has dropped our margin down considerably, but we're not anywhere near a safe zone. We're not anywhere near where we should be thinking that we're out of the woods. We're just so much better than we were, but still with exclusions, that that still has to be a consideration. And I think raising taxes under any circumstances is a mistake for that point and that point only. In 2019, as part of a large report that you all have read and we've discussed on multiple occasions, the Financial Restructuring Board gave us some advice. So we've heard from a former city manager, we've heard from the State Comptroller's Office, and now a board tells us, "Maintaining service levels while the city nears its constitutional tax limit is one of the most significant challenges the city faces near and long term." 2019 tax margin, the difference between the amount to levy and the amount legally authorized to levy is only $696,000. "Projecting forward if city increases at the same annual rate it has in 2014, the city's full assessment increases at the same rate it has in 2014. Also, the city would likely reach its constitutional tax limit in 2023." We were there. Take away the tax cut, take away the tax cut the last two years, we're there, and we've blown it by a long shot. And if we pay down debt, we've blown it over again. So we got disincentivized for paying down debt. The system doesn't ever think we're getting this close. It doesn't ever think we're getting this close. So it's not set up for that. Last page, Ultimate Fiscal Outlook. "In sum, the city will likely find it increasingly difficult to fund current services at as encroaches, as it encroaches the constitutional tax limit, and as expenditures primarily due to increasing salary and benefit costs, continue to outpace property value growth." It's the crux of where it is. We can argue what we want about it. This is not about people. This is about the amount of money we're taking out versus the amount of money that we're taking. There is it. Former city manager, State Comptroller's Office, New York State Financial Restructuring Board. In November 2021, I tell you, as we're preparing for the budget, why we're decreasing taxes, what it's going to get our constitutional tax limit down to, we're moving in the right direction. Are we causing pain? Absolutely, there's pain. Absolutely, we're doing what these experts say we have to do. We can't afford the size, the scope that we're doing. It's not there. We should quit telling people we're going to maintain the police department, the fire department, everything else the way it was. These reports tell you it's not possible. We didn't change any circumstance to prove them wrong. We couldn't, we didn't find a way to make more money. In fact, we've found a way to make some less. So we've been discussing these things. In February 2022, not that long ago, I briefed to you the state of the city. We closed out the end of the financial report. We tell you all the same things. I make a series of recommendations, property tax relief, home rule legislation, economic development zone, seats on a board, council liaisons, collaboration with the county, firefighter reserves, more, less from local law enforcement, more from county and state, study the benefits of consolidating and/or looking at our form of government, and this council rejected most all of them swiftly. Swiftly. Without, with little discussion. Hell, I think it'd been better if we'd had one of those fanfare arguments about it. We just shot them right down. Don't even want to talk about it. No way, no how, we're going to have less firefighters? We're going to have somebody else in here doing law enforcement? We're going to keep doing it our way. Okay. We're going to have to find a way to pay for it. We are now there. We're now there, and I hope now, for the first time since I've been here, that a seven-member seated council will recognize they have to work together. There's no way this can become, let a city manager drop a budget down, four or three people look at it, say no to everything they want to, and three or four look at it and say yes. It won't, it won't go down this time that way. It won't happen. We're too far apart on the numbers. There has to be more pain for the city to gain. There has to be. There's no other way around it. We cannot close this budget. The only way I can see without delivering less pain by way of reductions of the most significant part of our budget, which is personnel cost, in particular, public safety, is to spend all the fund balance that we have, raise taxes back to the constitutional tax limit, and still, still, it won't be enough. So let's say the comptroller and I can find a half million, three-quarters of a million. Heck, let's just say we're having a good day and we find a million in things that we can figure out how to not do. We can get rid of this, take away that program. It'll be everything. It'll be everything we haven't done for years. It'll be projects that are moving the city forward economically. It'll be projects that are cleaning up the waterfront. It'll be projects that are tearing down blighted, fires burned out, drug-ridden houses. It'll be all those things is where we'll get the money from. There's no place else for it to come from. If we're not willing to recognize what many experts have told us, we have to change the size, structure, and strength of the workforce to make it sustainable with the revenue that we can reasonably project. For all the positives out there that say, well, we're getting a citywide reassessment done. Everybody's property is going up in value. We all know that. If you're selling a piece of property now, you know that it's worth more than it was this time last year, two years ago, or certainly four years ago, when the state restructuring board was first in here. Is that good news? It won't be good news to a lot of people. Because even if the city does the right thing and offsets the tax rate to sort of match what the new assessable value is, guess who won't? The county. The school district. They'll follow that new tax rate rate up, and it'll mean more taxes. More taxes. The school tax rate is already far and away too high. So they won't have to raise the tax rate now. They'll just follow the higher assessment up, but that'll mean more taxes for somebody who isn't making any more money from their house.
Did the school board tell you that?
I don't have to have the school board tell me that. It's history.
That's a pretty big accusation they can make.
It's history. It's history, Dan. There's no evidence to the contrary.
But I think that much of a change that we're expecting in the assessments, I think, I have faith in the August brick school board that they're going to do the right thing.
They got $4 million a year for five states. Many times they said state aid was going down and they raised the tax rate. I didn't see them lower the tax rate, $4 million more. And they didn't lower the tax rate one bit.
I just think it's wrong to project what they're going to do. I mean, history, you could say history says they're not going to. But you can't say they're not going to, because you don't.
But, honestly, right? I mean- Perfectly, it'd be great to be wrong. It'll be great to be wrong.
Thank you.
The county won't lower it. You can't lower the tax rate for the city of Augensburg. The county's not going to lower their tax rate because city assessable value is enough.
Right.
So people are going to pay more taxes and likely not get anything more for it. So, and I would, again, I would submit right now, if the property values, let's just say modestly, went up 20%, the city could probably raise about another million dollars. The two tax cuts that have been done in the last two years have been worth about a million dollars. May call it a million, a million-one. 20%, we're able to shave down a million-one. Not an enormous number, really. So if it went up, maybe the city can look at another million dollars. But then what? Then you'll be right at your cap again. You're not going to see those kind of increases every year, nor is the city ever going to tolerate you doing assessments every year, every other year that may raise their assessable value 20%. So you're right back bumping that constitutional tax limit. There's no facts to tell you anything to the contrary. You're bumping that constitutional tax limit. So you get through another year, you kick the can down the road, you say, ah, they were wrong. It wasn't 2023. It'll be 2024 or 2025. I hope all of you will embrace this information now. I'm going to let Angela start out with our presentation, where we are. It's interesting, I got some comments back. One news media outlet couldn't wait apparently to write a story about this instead of listening to the presentation. There's nothing in this presentation that is good news. Some of the bullets in here, I understand where people might look at and say, "Budget does not include reduction in staffing." This does not include, doesn't say will not be, reduction in staffing. This does not include. So I'd like to let her start through this. We'll talk about some of this, and I want to give council some things to think about. The purpose of this presentation tonight is not for us to read line for line, it's to go through, to give you the high points. And I will chime in here because I'll be asking for some things at certain intervals for council to consider and hopefully provide us the feedback that we need to deliver you a closer-than-three-and-a-half-million-dollar-deficitive-budget on 1 November. Angela?
Good evening, Counsel. So before you is the draft preliminary budget, as city manager said. I just want to note the caveat at the beginning of this presentation that a lot of this is based on estimates this early, starting the fourth quarter of the year. Some of the numbers you're unable to pin down. So there are some estimates built into this budget. The way, what we have done so far is internally, I have met with the department heads. We've reviewed last year's budget, where we've been spending money this year, and made some adjustments appropriately, whether that be up or down on certain lines, which you'll see in the detail. But overall, this is a high-level look at the totals that you will be seeing in that budget. Right, so the first slide does talk about the budget highlights. Looking at the property tax rate, this budget does not include a change in the property tax rate from what was set in 2022. If you are to stay within the 2% tax cap, you could garner about $180,000 of additional taxes just by going up to that 2% limit.
So every 1% is about 90,000.
This is not the property tax limit that Steve was talking about. This is the 2%.
Yes.
Okay.
So if we raised it 2%, each percent, and that gives us 180, so each percent would be about 90. That's all.
So first point, I'd like to hear from council again by email, via whatever. When I took this job, 25% was the direction I was given. 25% over four years. So we've come 20%. And I just need to understand is that the council's intent to continue? Obviously, that's 5% in any one year or 2.5% for the next two years. But these are, these are some of the paths that we were on. We've been moving towards that 25% reduction. Again, there might have been some thought that a reduction in the tax rate was simply to return money to the taxpayers, which ought to be reason enough. But if we really want to create a gap, a cushion in that constitutional tax rate, we needed to bring the rate down 25%. That goal was not an arbitrary setting. So I'd like to hear from council, is that still something that we have to do? Again, does that seem difficult in a year and we're talking about a deficit? Yes, but there is a method to getting us stabilized here, and we shouldn't keep tearing the Band-Aid off little by little. At some point in time, we should recognize what has to be done and get it done.
So I would just like to reiterate that the preparation of this budget does take the city's FTE counts, full-time equivalencies, moves them forward. There's one place in the budget that a position was added, and I'll point that out as we go along. But the staffing levels are primarily maintained through when they're compared to 2022. So if we had 17 in one department, we have 17 in that department again.
So 2022's budget?
2022's FTE count is identical to what's in the 2023 FTE count.
But is that what was budgeted for?
Budgeted, correct, yes. And then you'll recall in July, we added a position that was also incorporated into this budget.
So we didn't add anything. I know there's discussion out there by the fire department, the police departments, etc. We didn't, this first give to you, again, is just saying in concert, pretty well, the plan. So there isn't anything else added. So if we were adding to that, that further adds to whatever's against, further something we've got to find and offset.
The health insurance costs within the city will increase 19% this year. So this budget has built in that 19% increase for health insurance cost.
We have exhausted, from my perspective, about every option we have here. I believe that depending on the level that council assumes this year, we will not even be eligible for the current, for the healthcare program that we're on now in 2024. We'll get through in 2023 because our FTE count will save that average number of about 100 they're looking for. And we drop below that, we won't even be eligible for the plan. So whether it's cost or whether it's ineligibility, we're going to have to reshop plans and programs for the city. What we have done in working with our current consultant, another one, and then preparing to communicate what the county, our needs would be again, to start the process soon of beginning that analysis so the council can make a decision in 2023 that will be effective in the 2024 budget. You're going to need three or four months to get through all this, and then you're going to need a couple of months after that to negotiate with the unions, the impacts of what these changes likely will be. So it's no tall order. We don't get to race until, right now, we've just been able to finalize this. So we'll get started on the path for a change in this for 2024. So just know that'll be a task that the administration will be up against next year. We're going to see a plan reduction in the retiree healthcare plan. And if you all know, I don't think we've seen no reduction. So if you kind of divide this 19% out over the last three years, which, again, I've always said to you, if you're generous, they, we got zero the last two years, but we always knew that this was going to come back and sort of average out. So I think it would have been looking at a 6%, 6.5% increase. None of us thought that was completely irrational on the question. And that's kind of what's happened here, the average over the three years, two that we had zero, about 19%. But cost certainly is a driver, but secondly, just, we likely are not going to qualify for the program any longer than we have now. So there will be a big task of health insurance coming up.
That 19% estimate, is that based on, you said on cost primarily, correct?
Yeah, 100%.
What aspect of it is the participants' usage? So, I mean, is it more, are we seeing more claims? Are we seeing, you know, the plan with the last plan, from what I understand, was to was to help offset
Yeah, you bought insurance.
Couples that may have had another plan, leave this plan for the other plan, for small buyout.
We've had a handful of very, I would call very high-dollar claimants overall that has driven this. We, again, this is nothing that we ever have any personal data to. We just see numbers, you know, employee, and these are the numbers. So we've had, and this is just based off then modeling what our costs have been. For our last couple of years, our costs, our premium aid, has exceeded what our claims have been. So that's how we get to the no increase because it's been there. This cost now is based on that. So different than where you were before when you were self-insured and you didn't have stock loss. Now you typically have insurance now. So the limits are largely, you know, all covered. Nobody's going to exceed that, the city isn't at risk. I don't think the insurance has been a bad idea, given our fiscal position and the whole idea of, again, having to create yet another reserve or savings account to be able to pay claims and especially not knowing, you know, the dollar value of those, but ultimately the cash flow, you have to borrow money likely to put in a reserve or move significant amounts of money. So I don't think that move to health insurance was a bad idea. And I think now you're looking at some kind of a hybrid program. I don't think that you're in a position now of looking, going back to a fully self-insured. Again, it's all about having the cash to do that. That certainly is the least expensive way to do it because the administrative costs are so much lower than buying insurance. But I do think that the companies will propose something of a hybrid in order to maintain coverage close to what employees have, but still allow the city to control costs and ultimately not see 10%, 15% increases every year in the year that they can't afford any.
Outside of any HIPAA violations, obviously, we're going to need to see some of that data.
And it's not available in any form, but we could violate anything. The insurance companies don't get it.
Right.
Our representatives don't get anything with that level of insurance.
So just moving on, this budget does anticipate less money coming over from water and sewer, as we discussed at the presentation of those two budgets. And what is not on this slide, which might be a little misleading, is that this is a deficit budget currently without appropriating any fund balance. So the deficit in this budget is roughly $3.5 million. So to-
I just want to talk on the parts we were going to admit. So again, it probably seems like we're kicking ourselves unnecessarily by producing a revenue source for the general fund. But again, as I said before, you all have to view yourselves as the board of directors for three separate companies, and you can't let one company jeopardize the other company. And we've been doing that. By pulling too much money from the water and sewer fund, again, our day of reckoning has come with the sewer. It will come soon with the water. And we don't have adequate reserves to cover even a good portion of those. We're going to have to borrow that money. So this 10% reduction is probably in the neighborhood of about 20% to 30% off, or it ought to be, in reducing the money coming out of those funds into the general. But this was another amount that continues to make a dent in our dependency of water and sewer offsetting inappropriate expenses in the general fund. And then again, ultimately, just not allowing us to maintain those funds so that we're prepared for those next capital expenditures that come along. Whether at short-term because you blow a pump or you take out, you know, a significant section of water main, again, right on up to significant upgrades or rigidity.
And just to reiterate that this budget does not include reductions in staffing, so.
So again, I didn't make it yet, but I don't, I don't, there's, it's unavoidable. I don't want council to keep this room tight. There's no way we're not producing staff this year. It's unavoidable. So we did not, again, propose any yet in this budget we've given you for the obvious reasons of we're looking for your tolerance and variance in those.
So moving ahead to speak about the projected revenue in the budget. If you start at the bottom of this chart, you can see the total revenue across. Going up one line is the appropriated fund balance. That is the portion of fund balance that has been used in the respective years. You can see that in 2022, council has elected to use $2.4 million of the fund balance. And if we were to balance this budget, which this isn't even possible to use this number, it would be a $3.5 million. And I just want to reiterate, it is not possible to appropriate that much fund balance. So looking above those bottom two lines, the total from real property tax down to other revenues in 2022 totals $13.1 million. That same total in 2023 totals $12.5 million. We're budgeting a reduction of revenue of almost $600,000. Where that comes about, $535,000 of that is ARPA money. And we've talked about that several times, how the ARPA money would not be available in 2023. And also, there's a reduction of New York State grants expected from the FRB. We had some communication grant money left over that was put into the 2022 budget that is not available in the 2023 budget. So the recommendation that I would have in attempting to balance this budget is to maintain a fund balance roughly of $2.5 million or more. I mean, that's an absolute bottom line. And really, to balance this budget using minimal fund balance as possible. There simply isn't that much available. We had ended the 2021 year with approximately $6 million fund balance. Some of that was in signed and encumbered and unavailable. For those reasons, we appropriated $2.4 million. For those reasons, we appropriated two point four million in two thousand twenty-two. That went to capital projects, police, fire, largely some other demolition projects that were going on.
What about the ready? That's not part of it, is it? Ready project?
In these numbers, no.
So that two point four mil is doesn't include any ready money?
It included a small amount. When we did that resolution, the Maple City Trail was seven hundred and six thousand dollars of that.
So in the end, with this ready project, the city decided we were going to bond it. So that money will get added back in when we make this bond, correct?
Better bond for more set power.
Why wouldn't we bond for all of it? I think that was the plan, wasn't it? I I did, absolutely, on the notion that when this ready project is finalized and we get the final number, that's what we're bonding for.
Yeah, so let's just say for the sake of argument, council, it's it's a choice council. They pay for it now.
I mean, I look at it like a mortgage, you know, if you could take and you got your eye on a five hundred thousand dollar house, you can sell all your stocks and empty out your bank accounts, or you could take a mortgage. And that's that's why municipalities bond, because they can't afford to just drain their coffers, right? And so.
You have four hundred thousand dollar, four hundred come down dollar ban for the original ready project that we've done since, a three million. So and then you take this, so you're you're taking a mortgage out for well over four million.
But we can't just pay it all at once. That'd be foolish.
One of the presentations that we. Yeah, one of the internal things that we've been working on is to come before you with a plan for the financing of the ready project. That project's ongoing. And so we have to have, and that will come up a little bit later in this presentation too, what the desire is with what we have. Council has said we can do as far as bonding of this project, where we're at, and creating a long-term financing plan. So that's coming up in the very near future.
Like before the budget gets passed?
Yes.
Okay, good. I think that's important that we look at that because that's going to affect these numbers.
It will affect your fund balance number, but it will not affect your revenue and expense appropriation budgets for two thousand twenty-three.
You're right. The normal revenue numbers, it's not going to touch.
That is correct.
But it definitely affects our fund balance, which I think is important because I agree with you. We need to maintain the fund counts. So we've been in a situation before back in two thousand fifteen and sixteen when you use that quote. We pulled ourselves out of it. We can pull it out again. It's what we're going to have to do, as you said, we've got to work together.
So if you go on the notion that we're we're about thirteen million dollars on a fund budget, and say twenty percent is two point six million, so somewhere in there. And and certainly there are plenty of numbers starting around the state's minimum recommendation for this. I'd just say at this point, twenty percent should be the minimum only. Because here's what here's what we don't have. That minimum balance would sort of be, if you wanted to elaborate on that philosophy, the minimum balance would be likely if you did everything else right. If you had reserves set up everywhere else, if you had a capital plan set up, you know, if you had, if you took, so if you took that money, that two and a half million that we have, and you and you filled in the blanks of all those things that you have zero in now, you wouldn't have that fund balance. So we're choosing to keep it in the fund balance. It keeps our numbers buoyed. It it's better for our books. But ultimately, there are plenty of places where that money can be distributed to and would drive that that fund balance down. So again, with that being said, I don't think reducing that amount to what is a discussed minimum number is anything but just, again, you know, continuing to eat away and call it the credit if you want. That you want to have. I I just want to say, and then those over numbers, you're just, the only thing to look at is, you know, people say, how did they go from having all this fund balance to not having so much? Well, the idea was we were we were trying to reduce the cost of some things to be able to do the types of things that council's been approving, ready projects, money for economic development, clearing properties, etc. That that's the whole reason a lot of this was being done. So you take, yes, you want to return taxes to people. Yes, you want to get out of the constitutional tax limit, but you have to recognize that when you're spending ninety plus percent of the money you're taking in every year on your annual operating costs, it isn't going to leave you money for these other things that you need to do over over time periods. So that that's really, again, where it's that size and scope of the organization, the workforce has to be at a level that is sustainable within, let's say roughly a thirteen to fourteen million dollar general fund. You can't keep spending right at what we're putting in. There isn't money for these these other programs. There isn't money to do the things that we've done with this this surplus money that we're able to harness. And and a good bit of the surplus, you know, we've never, no one has ever been less transparent. It's a good bit of our surplus was a higher than expected sales tax for for a couple of straight years. So we had to get money there. And again, but that's not money you you expect to continue. In fact, we know it's not going to continue. In fact, it's going to go down to ten, fifteen years ago sales tax money. So it was good one-time money to do some of these one-time projects to get them going. But to continue to use that money to temporarily fund a workforce that's bigger than what you can routinely afford is like, again, it's just that kicking the can down the road. So that that sort of answers the question I got asked a few times this week, where where did the fund balance go? Why'd you spend it all? My response is, we certainly didn't take the money away from all those entities. We didn't cut that number of positions, only to take that money to put it back into the positions. What what sense would that have made? It it wouldn't have made any. The intent was to use that money for for other purposes. Get our operating budget down into more like sixty percent, seventy percent of what we're using every year, not ninety percent.
Where are our sales tax right now through October one?
We're on pace, if you were to extrapolate that number out, we're receiving, and I put this number out there with caution because October is going to be a very telling month. And but we're on, we received another approximately two hundred and fifty thousand in the month of September. So if we keep going at that pace, we'll hit that three million dollar mark, probably slightly over, not much, so just call it three million. But October is going to be very telling because that's one of those reconciliation months.
So how much do we have through October?
I don't have the total with me, but I can certainly provide that chart that updates the total.
And and are the last three months usually higher? Are there more payments in there? And are they usually higher? Are they, is that quarter generally better than the other three quarters?
I don't, I'm not prepared to answer that question right now, but I can certainly provide that on a quarterly basis year over year. It's not a problem.
So I'll just say hypothetically, unqualified. In the last couple of years, it has been, there's been money in the economy. It's the holidays, it's full time going back. There's been money in use. I I think we're going to definitely see a difference in that this year. I don't I don't think that, again, is a trend. I think that quarter needs to be good because we had, so if we hit right around the two fifty this month, we had a few months that were over and a few months that were below. We hit, it's going to take a good fourth quarter. In other words, it's going to take a good fourth quarter to keep us where we where we project. And I know there were a lot of, again, concerns about were we projecting that too low? Of course, we're rounding the corner on the fourth quarter, and we're right at that number. Whether whether we've got some continued work to do to make sure we're getting all that we should do, or it's not off by a million dollars. I don't, I thought it's not off by a half million. So so that projection is is coming in there. In an economy that, you know, is 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 not going to immediately show signs of booming itself as the government money is taught. So I I don't think even a good fourth quarter is just going to keep us in and about ten percent of where we are. I don't think you're going to, you're not going to finish the year and see a million dollars. And I don't a million dollars more. And I really think we've ridden the wave of miracle expectation that this county's sales tax numbers would keep beating the odds. In fact, beating the state trend when so many other counties saw the downturn in sales tax. We had that miracle where it kept.
We really needed the legislation for the whole.
Well, we needed Home Rule, but you weren't ever going to get it. We still can. There's nothing stopping us.
Well, we should try for this next year.
We we see, you don't have a a basement number for the first quarters?
I provided it in the presentation last that we gave on sales tax, and it's just not fresh in my mind. It was provided as part of our, one of our regular meetings. I can resend that. It's not a problem.
No, I'll look it up.
There's a bar chart that shows a red line at two and a half, two hundred and fifty thousand every single month, and it shows the collections monthly.
Two fifty is what we got averaged. At three million, we got to have two fifty.
And.
For the next three months, October, November, December.
We we can do a little less the next three months because we actually ran it a little higher, but we had some months recently, we know we're well below that. So we've kind of used our excess, if you will, to help teeter off our two fifty. So we we just, we need to strike, let's just say, at least two fifty a month. We need to stay right at our protection.
So how do you come to three million, two hundred thousand for two thousand twenty-three?
So so again, just throwing out for council right now, we've, again, I think it's somewhere between that, three, three, two, etc. What I'm trying to do at the moment is just not make that red number look so bad, not make it look so closer to four million. As we watch the the sales tax come in, gain more confidence that the system is working the way it's supposed to work. You know, hopefully, we can pick up another two hundred thousand off, but we'll pick up this year three million. But I don't, I don't, um. I I feel like, I I feel like our, in our projections on sales tax, I think we've we've looked at the data. We went back as as far back as a couple of decades, data before the city preempted. And I think our projections of the last couple of years have have been on the the surplus that we saw in sales tax. Again, had our numbers just just ways way spiking based on the agreement that we were in then.
Prior.
So it's it's really hard to keep looking back at that, other than to say, this is what the city was using and but even if you look back prior to the last couple of over years, you know, we were right around this. That that spike into the fours only happened in the last couple of years.
And we also had the benefit from the financial structure.
And had we continued that, so 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 you can kind of get the general trend again, the county is up as a county, the numbers are up. So had we been on that same agreement, we'd have been on target to have been getting four point seven.
You're correct.
Yeah, we'd have been, we'd have been bumping up on five million. We'd have seen that same level of increase to ourselves. So that that's that's what that past formula was not was worked.
Unfortunately, the FRB board was.
So and 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 the county wasn't offering.
Neither, neither.
The county wasn't offering.
No, we would have lost two million under their formula. As it stands, we're losing one point seven million in revenue under by preempting. That's just, that's just the way it worked out.
And if you want to take a, you know, a look at this, I mean, maybe, again, I think we said in another meeting, this this will help steer priorities for this council and future councils. And if there's any doubt about the requirement to be one hundred percent, this seem business friendly and future business promoting. At no time ever in the history of the city, pockets of purpose, sales tax matter more than it does now because you you're relying only on your sales taxes. So I I think this now will kind of pave the way for future policy that there can't can't be disagreement about what you have to do, which is anything and everything to attract business. But that is the only way that you're going to see revenue outside of property tax increase by doing more business activity and generating more sales.
Okay, on the next slide, what this slide does is it takes the total appropriations of sixteen point one million, and it divides it by five major categories. And this is usually, this is right in line with what's in the front of your budget book when you receive that. So just looking at the very bottom right-hand corner, total appropriations are sixteen million, one hundred eight thousand dollars. The general, now back at the top, the general government support services looks like that has seen a decrease of about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. But I, there are some numbers in there that were nonrecurring that were pulled out for the two thousand twenty-three budget, which would include some demolition projects and also the citywide assessment. So that citywide assessment alone was two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So this this particular portion of the city's budget has seen the same increases that we see in public safety, public works, recreation, et cetera. But they're somewhat masked by taking out those large expenditures for the citywide assessment and demolition projects. Looking at the last category, non-departmental items, you can see the trend in this going across the page, seven sixty-five to six hundred fifty-two thousand. Then we jumped to one point three million the last two years. In two thousand twenty-two, the contributing factor of the jump in that number is related to transfers to the capital project fund for Maple City Trail and also FEMA flooding, I believe, was the other one. And so when we come into two thousand twenty-three, those numbers obviously don't repeat. But what we are faced with is an increase of debt service that we'll also talk about. So there's one point three million dollars of debt service payments potentially due. Whereas in prior years, that same number has only been about three hundred, little over three hundred thousand dollars. So there's a significant increase in what's due there.
So on this slide, again, it doesn't matter how you want to color this, doesn't matter how you want to label people's feet. Fifty-five percent of the budget, despite the reductions that we've done to the public safety staff, it's still consuming more of the budget than the city can operate on. It's it it can't stay at fifty-five to sixty percent. You can't run the rest of the city and the projects on forty percent of the revenue you take in on a daily basis. You you just can't do it. It it doesn't matter what you want. Multiple people have told you the public safety model can't work. You're consuming too many resources. This isn't about how, what, when, where, safety factors or otherwise. It's about what can the city afford? And you'll be right back next year as these numbers flip again, bumping up on sixty percent. There's no other community in the state with a healthy constitutional tax and a healthy economic growth going on that is paying out, bumping up on sixty percent. It it doesn't exist. We've got to face the reality. There's just not enough to go around and continue funding at that.
But we also did everything we could in terms of the fire department and the state basically told us what we can and can't do. So I mean, that's a, you know.
I think in regards to the fire department, uh, council, we've done everything we can do.
Police department is is really a question of manpower and, you know, crime and drugs and, you know. That I I really think comes down to the fact that the state owns thirty percent of the city. And 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 we're subsidizing the state.
It's a, it's a hundred percent that. And and I don't, you know, I feel like that is a new fact that is known. I just think it's, it is something that nobody has ever charged the hill on. I think the resolution council has passed, sets the stage for for that. The question is going to be now, can you get the public and political support at all level in multiple communities to to get the legislative to change that? There's no question we're running this city. We showed you those numbers too. What it would look like if we had just twenty-five percent, fifty percent of all of that property, how we just were counting the vacant stuff. We weren't counting every, we just went after the vacant. I I can, I guess we did through everything. We just took everything nonprofit, state and federal government out. But you saw the change in the tax. And so even if you didn't equate that all to lower tax rate, that would be that much more money. You would have money to fund this. But but outside of that, until that happens, how how does the city survive? Do you keep rolling the dice in hope that you avoid bankruptcy? You know, while you while you take on a battle like that that we haven't been able to win in 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 fifty years. It's it's definitely a big one that needs to be fought for the for the long.
So just in summary on this, this calls for a three point eight percent increase in spending, far below the current inflation rate. So just a point to take away from that. The next slide just basically takes the same exact numbers, slices them a different way, looking at it as personal service, equipment, capital, debt service, fringe benefits. Personal service costs have increased eleven point three percent. Every contract calls for for a lot of employees, a step increase as well as a percentage of increase in salary. So those are three and three and a half percent this year. The other contractual expenses, you'll notice two thousand twenty-two takes a spike, then it drops down in two thousand twenty-three. For those three things we just talked about, the citywide assessment, putting money into the capital project fund, demolition projects. If you were to take these out, that two thousand twenty-two year would be much more in line with the other three years presented. The debt service, as I stated just a bit ago, creeps up from three hundred thousand dollars roughly to one point three million. What's in that one point three million is a final payment on a ban for the Lake Ontario flooding. That ban started at two million. There's a final payment due of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That one has to be paid. Also included in that number is we have a fourteen. Also included in that number is we have a fourteen, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar ban outstanding on the Ready Project. So that was our five percent match of that eight million dollar grant that we received.
How much was it?
Four hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty nine dollars. So that particular one will be due in the springtime. This is, we can make the choice to do a principal reduction to the tune of approximately thirty thousand, which if we make that made that choice, then renew the ban at three eighty five, let's say. Um, then we could add three hundred and eighty thousand dollars back into this budget. It's three hundred and eighty thousand that the the city would not have to spend. So I just want to make that point that that ban does call to be paid off in the spring, but we do have the option to make only a principal reduction payment with interest.
And likely that's the only way to go. So takeaway on this slide, again, you can all quickly do the math, sixteen million dollars, eleven million dollars going to personnel cost. Line one and line six, fringe benefits, if you will, that is health insurance, retirement contributions, tax, et cetera. Sixteen million dollars, eleven million, we're we're spending on the personnel costs. When you're looking at how do you recoup three million dollars when you take away the next or the next four lines in there? Any two of them barely get us there, and that would be taking away all those lines. Uh, if our personnel costs are just going up uh five percent a year, and ultimately they go up more than that when you factor in the raises, the cost of insurance, retirement, et cetera. Uh, we're we're ticking the cost of the city up a half million plus dollars a year. Our ability to raise revenue is not ticking up by half million dollars. These are just, these are just black and white numbers.
Capital outlays. What's what's the capital outlay? What's the short answer on that?
It went from eight sixty five to one million seventy one, that line?
Going back to twenty.
So that's one.
He says double from twenty twenty three.
I'm not, I'd have to look at the twenty twenty detail versus twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Down the skirt.
Yeah.
It's a half a million dollar.
I can do that. So in summary, um, looking at the next page, it details your fringe benefit detail. Um, you'll note that wages went up eleven percent. Commensurate with that is your social security taxes are also showing a similar increase of approximately eleven percent. The other big line in here uh with a significant increase is health insurance. Um, when you do the math on that, health insurance is just below um eighteen percent increase. Our premiums were nineteen percent increase, there is some change in coverage, whereas some employees may have retired, new employees come in, they have a buyout, so you know, the math isn't quite nineteen percent, thankfully. Um, but it is very close to eighteen percent. The chart below um shows you the premium change from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. So our family policy in the city is now thirty three thousand, five hundred and eighty seven dollars a year for a family. Um, when we budget an unknown position, this is the number that we budget for simply because you have no idea if there's, you're going to recruit someone who is single, two person or family, so. Any questions on your fringe benefits? The next, um.
Those are all contractual, you know, I have any control over them.
We do not, no.
Control in two thousand nineteen, but we have no control over them now unless you want to respectfully ask the unions to come to the table, which uh.
But there's a direct correlation of these fringe benefits, right? There's a direct correlation of these fringe benefits with what council and the city, what we decide to do with wages. So we increase wages in year one, we're going to see the impact of that on New York State Retirement. We decrease it, we're going to see the impact of that on New York State Retirement. So while we are contractual and it's hard to effectuate a lot of change in that, we do make that change as a city um by changing the personal service dollars.
And you are going to ask the bargaining units in twenty twenty three to to change the plans going to, I'm certain it's going to happen. We're going to, we're not going to have a hundred F T Es, that is the number we have to to maintain. Um, you're 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 going to have to go through that, it's it's going to occur.
Health insurance should be and usually is, I mean, at least from my perspective, it's the first conversation I had in any negotiation. It was going forward.
Right, and and so I think council powers to that, and that's that's also why you'd you'd have to, I would say at least on premise agree that the length of the contract duration is it's not even real, it's it's a it's a it's a point that I know we've bantered about, but at the end of the day, it's it's not real. How can you, how can you tell somebody you're going to do something for seven years when a mar market like health insurance is so volatile? You you can't predict it from year to year, how could you, how can you sign up to six, five, six and seven years? It's just not, it's not real.
That's what happened in the table. You attempted to do that the last two or three years with no no success, so.
The next slide, if there's no further questions or comments on that, um, is the appropriation detail for the general government support program, so mayor, city manager, comptroller, et cetera. At the very bottom of this, above the total, there's an other column, you'll see a significant variance in two of these departments. First one being assessment, fourth line down, um, that's the removal of the citywide assessment cost out of that department. And then the other um is the removal of uh demolition costs. So the other decreases from five hundred and six thousand down to two hundred and seventy two thousand. And a lot of that is related to demolition costs that we have not budgeted for in twenty twenty three.
Now also, these are, and again, as we said at the outset, we're we're making the obvious takeaways, we're not artificially inflating the amount of potential expenditure, so the things that we knew or re or or one time costs or one project, we've we've taken those down. Everything else, for the most part, I want council to hear from the department heads, because it will go to the question of capacity and capability of the departments based on the level of of funding that they that they get. So this isn't a a see how high we can make the number for the pain. It's ultimately, again, saying if if people are unhappy now with the level of service that we're providing, we've got to begin to to message and talk about what the levels of service are going to be. And then we've also got to understand that as we talk about potentially doing less in any department with resources, money or personnel, what what will be the reduction in services? There's no, from my view, there's no no department uh even close to, well, if we cut just one or two people, that we wouldn't have a loss in service. We're 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 well beyond that, I think council is is well aware of that in in every department, in particular, public safety. So I I think we really have to talk again and make sure we understand the relationship with service levels versus funding levels.
The next slide is a look at the details of each public safety department, so we go through, there's five main ones there. Police, fire, animal control, rescue squad and code enforcement. The police line has increased nine point seven percent. The fire has increased sixteen point five percent. Code decreased due to the lack of demolition projects budgeted for, and there has been nothing allocated to the rescue squad in this budget. Total public safety um budgeted for the city is eight point nine million dollars. Approximately, as Steve said, fifty five percent of that budget. One of the big differences in the fire budget is that in two thousand twenty two, back in July, uh, we did a resolution to include that fifth man coverage, if you will. So the cost that added back into the budget at that point in time were a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars because we were only dealing with a partial year. In two thousand twenty three, uh, the fire chief and I worked through these numbers, and that fifth man coverage is an approximate cost of a half a million dollars, funding that in the current model. And that is wages and taxes.
So while your department heads will present their budgets, Angelo will show you some costs. There is obviously some additional cost uh of the way we're paying hazard pay and the overtime that's required, in particular uh to the fire department. I'll I'll just admit to counsel what I've said on a number of occasions, and I spoke it just recently at the firefighter's arbitration. My concern isn't right now necessarily for the amount of money, it's for the sustainability of the number of positions. These are positions that there are not any close by. If you hire a firefighter, we ought to have some level of notion that we're going to be able to allow them to complete a career. Anything can happen, things change, but we shouldn't knowingly go down the road of hiring people when we don't know if they're going to finish an academy uh based on the timing of 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 budget. So my my only apprehension here, uh, when we talk about this is yes, this is the one area where I'll say we certainly can look at perhaps hiring additional bodies will offset some of the costs, in some cases make our overall cost of doing business less. But do we now expose, you know, four people, six people, eight people to potential layoffs? If we're not able to continue this the year after that, the year after that. Counsel Rich had asked me one time about a, you know, a financial plan and and budget projections. I think we've tried to to give you that to you, I think council has has really had that in some aggregate form prior to myself and Angelo working this, but I think we've tried to give you those projections, and one of those reasons for that is is just this this purpose here is are we hiring people in particular that would have a heck of a time? You know, gaining employment in their in their occupations. So I just ask councils, we go down uh this path to to keep that in mind. What what we can afford this year or for the rest of this year or next year is a reason to believe we can afford it next year or the year after, so. Well, the the period hasn't closed yet, and I don't uh, I don't know that there's any indication if we're not, if we haven't given it, we're given funding on the front end or the back end, the period's not closed. So I'd say at the moment, counselor, I just would say now, we have not received it, but the the period has not closed yet, on which we could still get in the works.
If we go back to the general government support page on the central services, can you give us a breakdown from twenty twenty as well as Counsel Rich asked in the previous question? The significant increase from twenty twenty to uh the the estimated projection for twenty twenty three. Might still about a hundred and twenty seven thousand from twenty twenty and about forty five, almost fif almost fifty K for the next year.
Sure, I can give you the breakdown live online on that, and it is in those budget pages as well. Uh, but some of what you will notice is that in the year we start to see the major spike is that previously, every city department had budgeted for telephone and just lots of citywide services, that was all moved into the central service. And so you'll see those expenses come out of the departments in those years, and then everything budgeted into this one category.
And we continue that, we we continued looking for anything that didn't have to be a part of a department budget that was an overall that council could look at the program in general and say, we're going to do it for the city or we're not going to do it for the city. Versus trying to uh arbitrate in each department, are we going to let you do this, we're going to let you do that? Are we going to let you buy copiers, not you buy copiers, et cetera? So we've tried to look at that, the vehicle lease program. Um, I think while we're still tracking it through the through the budgets independently, we're trying to look at again from a policy perspective, do we have the same philosophy going on, so?
The next uh category would be public works. This slide breaks down all the main department submissions within the public work department. This is the one place in the budget where a position was added, so this, when you see the details, will it be an additional building maintenance worker? Several buildings within the city all need attention, and you have Shane would have to correct me if I'm wrong, but by and large, one person kind of trying to head off those repairs. Sure, they have assistance from the department, but there's one person that oversees a lot of that.
So overseeing all aspects of city operations?
Yeah, and getting some help, council powers on doing the repairs through all of these buildings. So that's, this is the one place where a position was added. We also see in this budget, there's an eight percent increase in total spending in the uh public works budget overall. But this is one of the places where it's highly impacted by the um cost of materials, the cost of gasoline, the cost of salt. So these numbers, I think if we were to look across citywide budgets, um, these are showing a little bit larger of an increase than.
One of the things I'll ask Shane to do in the presentation is is lay that out for you, because again, uh, there's no area simpler and more easy to draw straight lines between here's how much money we get, here's the services that can be done. There there's not a lot of flexibility here in Shane's programs where if we say, well, we're just going to take some from here, but can you keep doing the same thing? Most everything here is tied to capacity, so this will be this will be a a challenge for Shane to ex to explain that, so you understand it, because again, any cuts from here will will result in some service uh reduction or or elimination for for certain.
The next slide uh details recreation, this is another one of those departments that um has a larger increase than other departments within the city, so overall, we're looking at an increase of spending of eighteen percent across all of recreation. It's some of um also what's happening there is um the cost of materials, there's a lot of electricity used in this area, et cetera. But in addition, there is a few small capital expenditures planned here, one of which halfway down the slide is the pool. Um, there is a fifty thousand dollar capital expenditure planned there for the baby pool, kitty pool. It does not include a significant um capital improvement that we'll mention for the large pool in a couple of slides. The beach, uh, what staff's recommendation was on the beach was to simply cut all the expenses except for one, and that is the cost of a feasibility study, um, if I'm using the right term, and just see what the best path forward is for the beach. Celebrations is the cost of um money that the city contributes to the Seaway Valley Fest. So there's two planned fireworks in uh with that second one being in December. So it was not budgeted for two in twenty twenty two, but definitely a budget of two fireworks displays in twenty twenty three. So that is uh probably the high level view of recreation. Okay, the next are our nondepartmental items, um, one point three million, we've talked about all these numbers. You can see the difference between twenty twenty two, where the funds are going, the funds are the same roughly budgeted for twenty twenty two versus twenty twenty three, um, just the uh where they're appropriated for is the change. So we are expecting one point three million of debt service, which could um with council's direction be reduced three hundred and eighty thousand, as we discussed. So it brings it to just under a million. The next slide uh talks about capital project requests. Um, if we had put these in the budget, we would be presenting a budget with a deficit of two million. I'm sorry, a budget with a deficit of six and a half, five and a half million dollars, uh roughly. Um, that is the estimate um that these four projects will exceed two million. If these were budgeted correct, so three point five plus two million plus.
The whiskey center's had two roofs on it since I was sitting.
That was a request that I received from the department was to include that as a repair. So.
So.
Do we have a warranty with that? When's the last time it was done?
Probably, they they just built it.
So Shane will Shane will detail each one of these in his project, I guess what I'm trying to show you here is this, if I gave you just this.
I get my question answered real quick, yeah?
So when I built the Dubisky Center, uh, the roof was faulty. It 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 didn't breathe correct, so then they put a new roof on it while I was councilor, I think the the old roof was on like just before I got. And it was faulty, so then they put a new roof on it that left an airspace to solve the problem. I can't imagine, you know, that we need new roofs. If we do, we would break it for a wreck, so.
Remember the contract awards by chance?
I don't, offhand, probably have it noted somewhere.
Thank you. Anything else in the budget?
Hang on a minute. So capital, at some point, at some point, we have to look at the capital. We we, again, we have to look at capital improvements, we're not, we're not budgeting the last two years for capital. It 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 causes these deficits, Shane will land all these projects up, and there's a list with twenty more on it that that we're not addressing. Uh, the Lafayette Street Bridge, I I didn't notice, counselor, can't believe calling that one a question, because you know well, we've kicked that can down the road, hope for every option we could. Hope for every option we could, hope for every miracle, right? It's our bridge.
Probably addressed it twice since I've been on.
It's a. It's a big lift that we're responsible for. And so we've got to address capital as we continue through these budgets. They won't go away, and we won't grant our way out of everyone. Andrea and Shane will discuss this Lafayette Street Bridge as an example with you, where we've done everything, 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 and short of it coming into a point where it is going to fall down and tagged unusable, we probably have exhausted every program that's there. It's our bridge.
The two thousand twenty-three recommendations, simply put, it's just to establish a spending plan that primarily priority A eliminates the deficit, but plan for long-term stability. And so we just need to put together a plan that as we make these changes in two thousand twenty-three, we're looking ahead three, five years to also see the impact of those in future years. So we don't keep coming to this point as a city. We also, this budget calls for, I don't believe it calls for any grant matches. It doesn't call for any investment in capital. So the next three bullet points really ask for our focus to be on that. Council does have to establish the reserves. We do need to make a multi-year capital plan. When we receive these grants, we need to be able to recognize that we have the matches and get those quickly incorporated into the budget in the appropriate year, which is a little bit difficult. I will admit that, but it still needs to be looked at ongoing and not just kind of kick down the road as we'll figure it out when the time comes approach. When we apply for grants, Andrea keeps a running tally of grants that are out there with the potential matches that we have. So that information is available, and we have a few grants out there that are still sitting in the ask category, I would say, that we haven't been denied or awarded. And we do have a total of what that potential match would be. So something to keep in mind as we keep going for more grants.
Thank you. Going forward, I'd like to do five sessions. If council thinks we can condense them, great. I just don't know.
You're going to give us a balanced budget though, when we get our budget?
I will, I will give you a balanced budget on one November, absolutely. No question. Whether that is with your, with your participation or without, I will, I will turn a balanced budget. Absolutely.
So the budget that we're going to receive, though, prior to when you're scheduled to give it by November one, is a work in progress, you're saying?
But the budget I'm going to send you all tomorrow, the documents, if you will, a hundred and fourteen pages of scratch paper, if you want to look at it that way, will be for you to be able to look at each and every sheet that we're looking at and formulate your own ideas where three and a half million may come from. Again, I can, I can tell you how I would do it, but I think, again, this is, this is not an opportunity where you should be relying on the city manager. We've got to make significant change. Council's got to be able to look at this and say, this is, this is where we think we can go. This is where we think there's tolerance. Again, the budget we're giving you now, I think we've lined out things that are the obvious, like we didn't put two hundred and fifty thousand for the citywide assessment is an example. That's a big ticket one. So we didn't, again, we didn't throw things in there, but, but no, the one we'll send you is not balanced. What I'm looking for is the input so that what I bring you on November first is a culmination of all of your thoughts of how we, how we balance it. Other than I give you something, it's my thoughts and.
Doesn't normally work that way. It's just.
That's why we're here in October, not November.
Yeah.
Because again, I'm.
Normally, the manager presents a budget in November first, and then the council holds its workshops and makes the changes. It's.
I think this year looks so harrowing. If I give you a budget that's balanced, I think it will be hard to decipher through the noise.
Well, there's some things to look at.
That you're going to provide us tomorrow.
Yep.
Along with a proposed budget. I mean, I concur with the council ratio. I mean, ultimately, you propose budgets, what we hired you to do, it's in your job description. You bring it to us, and then we have our work sessions. Not disagreeing with anything you're saying. You know, but ultimately, at the end of the day, I mean, that's typically how it's done.
Yeah. We all know if I say less cops, three and a half of you on any given night here say no. If I say less firefighters, three and a half of yous, three and a half of yous say no.
But ultimately, this is something that we vet and we hash out.
Yeah. Again, we can do it this way. I'm just saying to you, I think if I do it on November first, it puts you all in a pretty difficult position to get through it by the fifteenth of December. I think it's rough. We're here a whole month early, hoping that we can have this aggregate discussion. So on November first, we're.
Have a good starting point. I don't want to get a budget tomorrow with the three point five million dollar deficit. I want you to take care of some of that.
I think.
As much as you possibly can.
Well, he says he's got information to share with us and outlines.
So John, this is a good, it's a good point of discussion. You've said no, you said no to less firemen all year. You've said you added.
No, that's not.
That has nothing to do with.
It has a lot to do with it. Are your votes just a month or two ago not relevant today?
Of course, they're relevant today, but we're talking about two thousand twenty-three's budget, proposed budget.
I agree. But if your guidance and your thinking to me not been relevant today, I told you when you added the police officers, you shouldn't do it. We don't have the money. You needed it anyway.
We added one.
Okay, you should have added none. You're probably going to take some away now.
Is this a point you want to make?
It's a point I've been making.
Okay, well, the council decides.
Agree. So let's get to slide now. What you're asking me to do is now give a budget that at least three of you can machine gun on any given day, which, again, has been the history, not working to see where we can make cuts.
This is an opportunity for us to have.
Sure.
It's our job to have both put in it.
So I'd like to have the workshops this month. I'd like to schedule five. If you could all, I'll start to send you some dates. I'd like to get them started soon. I just think it's important you hear. So as I say to you, I think we need, to balance the budget, we need four less police officers. The chief can tell you, here's what my organization looks like, current staffing, less staffing or more staffing. I think, I think those are the things you need to hear now so that when you get it, you're aware of those implications. I think Shane needs to tell you, any movement in my organization, here's the service that we can or can't do. I think those are things that need to be understood. So you all have had every opportunity to understand what the implications of cuts would be.
I think it's a good idea. This is pretty extraordinary, this deficit. Gives us time to work on it and gives us a chance to give input.
We lowered taxes twice this recently. So the question will be, do we raise taxes or do you want to continue lowering taxes? I mean, I think those are, these are all the questions. And there's really, there's three lines here that make a difference. We'll call four. We'll just say you can throw some of this on the management team to figure out how to gain efficiencies in a, in a, in an environment where we've gained twenty percent efficiencies the last couple of years to cut taxes twenty percent. So you can throw some on us, but at the end of the day, it's number of people, tax increase, fund balance use. That's, that's the combination of the four that will balance the budget. Pens, pencils, this and that isn't going to balance it. Arguing about two copiers or three copiers isn't going to get it done. It's going to be how much fund balance do you use, if any? How much tax increase or decrease do you owe? How many positions stay strong? And then ultimately, what can the staff find more efficiencies in a year when they've had to find every efficiency they could for the last two years to make twenty percent reductions in the tax revenue work?
Just some things to look at. I mean, if we look at a real property tax increase, I mean, stay within the two percent tax gap, that's a hundred and eighty thousand. I, you know, I think we should take a hard look at sales tax revenue, maybe an extra two hundred thousand there on the revenue side. We've been diverting or trying to shore up the water and sewer funds over the past two or three years. There might be two hundred thousand there that can go toward the general fund, which is a legitimate expense given that, you know, our employees do those services, and a lot of those services go to the state. So it's appropriate. Capital expenses, I think, can be reduced significantly. I think we have to take a look at, just, just my first blush on some increases in the DPW with street maintenance, snow removal. I think there's some savings there. There might be some saving in parks. Yeah, we'll probably have to use some fund balance. We don't know what that is. Don't have the audit yet. Dan's suggestion about the bands. And what Angela said about refinancing that debt, there's some savings there. And I think we must take a little serious look at that staffing in both police and fire. And what is the most efficient thing in terms of overtime? I mean, obviously, we spend an awful lot of money on overtime for both departments. So what is the magic number of people? And reduce overtime by two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, some of those things that add up to a couple of million dollars right there. So, I mean, there's, there's, those are all things you can look at.
Just remember when you take on debt, it's going to make it harder.
Most people have a mortgage on their house, and most people have a car payment on their car.
Well, here we are. So we're doing over four million dollars in projects, and you should be paying some of them. So we do pay, we did continue to pay that seven hundred thousand. That's just paying, putting in a share.
I wanted to sign for the cost of what the state gave us in our match, but for some reason, it was way over.
The ready project, more set parts. Take all that out, but all you have to track. That's all you have.
Those discharges just have it made. We just got to deal with them.
So that, that was, you know, that was approved. That's all you have to track. So if you want any amenities down to more set, then you'll have to buy them.
Personal appearances.
We're all done with our presentation. Have it been good?
Thank you.
At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council, please, down supporting, and you have five minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Tulley. I live at two fourteen Hamilton Street. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. First, based on information shared over the past few months, saw the increase in the projected deficit in two thousand twenty-three move from seven hundred thousand, this was ended in April, now to three point five million. I think an approach to employee unions to negotiate changes to contracts is now appropriate. I commend council for thinking outside the box and an approach to New York State for pilot payments. Perhaps an approach could be made to St. Lawrence County to continue half percent sales tax support, if I understand the arrangement that that would cease if we got home rule. But since we didn't get one percent, perhaps they might be able to help us out. But I just hope we haven't exhausted all goodwill with these bodies and any attempt to seek help to deal with the two thousand twenty-three deficit as currently presented. Next, I want to make some comments in reaction to the city manager's comments about the school district and the tax levy there. Let me preface by saying, I worked for twenty years as a public school business administrator. And when I left that position, I ran and was elected and served on the Augsburg City School District School Board for ten years. So I have familiarity with school finances. And I think it's a tremendous misrepresentation to believe that the reassessment in the city of Augsburg is going to generate a windfall of taxes for the school district. Every year, since the New York State put in the tax cap, which is a tax cap increase on the total levy of two percent or less, every year, the school district has been within that, in that two percent. Every year, it's had a budget voted, supported, approved. If they went to something beyond the tax cap, a supermajority is required, sixty percent vote, which is something that they don't want to see. And in terms of where they are financially, in terms of their balance sheet, I think their balance sheet is very strong. You know, we talked about the city looking to establish reserves for capital improvements and things of that nature. Well, if you look at the school district's balance sheet, they have reserves for tax law proceedings to go back four years. So in other words, if there was a case in court where a taxpayer was deemed to be, do a refund from payment of overpaying their taxes in prior years, school district pays it out of their reserves, you'd be paying it out of your budget. They also have reserves for capital improvements. They have reserves for retirement system. In my twenty years working as a school business administrator, there were times when the, the assessment for retirement went eight, nine, ten percent of salaries. All right? And having reserves in case we saw that type of inflation helped limit the impact on the budget. You know, so they're going to stay within the two percent tax cap. There isn't going to be a windfall. They're also dealing with three tax rates. Twenty percent of the school district property is with the town of Oswego. Okay? Again, it's pure math. They increase the levy by two percent or less, and whatever the assessment is, you back down. And that's why if you look at their tax rate, their tax rate's been relatively stable for a decade. And as I've made a comment in the previous meeting, as a percentage of total budget, their tax levy is lower than most communities the same size in St. Lawrence County. So I think it's a gross misrepresentation to think the school district is going to see a windfall due to reassessment. And if I was the city, I wouldn't be pushing that message out there. It does a disservice to the community. Thank you.
And there's still thirty dollars per thousand, so. Which is as much as the city and county together. It's tremendous. Financial strain on a lot of the people. Is there anyone remotely attended?
I do not see any hands raised.
So we do have an executive session tonight, and it's very lengthy, and I think everybody knows it. So what it's about? Many different things is possible. So I'll make a motion for an executive session.
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yeah.
Counselor Dilliba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher? Counselor Fisher? There's a lag. I don't know if you can hear it on your end, sir, but we're getting a lag. You did hear, yes? Thank you, Counselor Reese. Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese? Approved.
Would you not anticipate any action? So I'll make a motion.
All in favor, mayor, or opposed, please?
All in favor. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. I will be right there.